Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Hi, it is 6:02. It is January 3rd, 2023. We are in the lower theater for the regular select board meeting. There's a Zoom link, folks, on the website, so you can connect that way. There were a few of you on there. So, that being said, I would call the meeting to order. First order business is to approve the minutes of December 2022. Take a motion.
I'm going to approve the minutes of December 2022.
So here's our second. Folks, the main second is to approve the minutes of December 2022. Any additions, corrections? I have one on page two that you pulled over. The second sentence says, "Go ahead and why submit the minutes." I don't remember saying that I said that. I'm sure someone else did. I know that it's a comment with name, but I don't think with name. And the other thing is on page three. Capital budget, major project is on typo. Then that can end on there. One warning. Other than that, I'm good. Anyone else? Here we go, now both in favor of approving the minutes and say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All votes nay, votes carry. The next thing is the addition to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or personal matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. I have none, Scott.
No, no addition, just everybody. We had updated a copy of the warning as well as an updated copy of the town budget and tax rate. There'd been a couple modifications since the email went out. So we'll go through those again tonight before you approve. So you should have an updated copy at your workplace there.
Okay. Anyone else on board? You're in, I'm moving right along. Public comment on items not on the agenda, three minutes per person. Charlie, you have any?
I don't.
Oh, you're just hanging out?
I'm just here just to, because this is above the budget and I want to educate myself on it.
Oh, good luck. Nothing further than we.
That's commendable.
Okay. You don't have any?
I just came about the grant for the Rockham meeting house.
Oh, you go wildly on here. We'll catch you. It's coming. Public comment, everyone said that. Let's go to the manager's report.
Thank you. I'm gonna let somebody into the meeting here real quick. Joe? So a couple of items. One that's this Saturday. There will be a... Ridwick is going to have an impact walk. So, meeting downtown Central School, Saturday at 10:00 a.m., for those who are interested. And I think the goal here is to take a look at places that might be eligible for, I guess, other types of housing extensions, for lack of a better word, or...
Well, really to look at the housing in the neighborhoods and the impacts of work that Wind and Winter Housing Trust programs have done, and they could be done in other houses. So there's grant programs to help homeowners with some repairs and improvements. And we're going to look at some of that work that's been done. And there is more of that funding for the coming year as well.
So it's a good opportunity to highlight some available programs for folks and hopefully maybe generate some more interest so we can get some more of that money working in the community. So that's Saturday morning, starts at 10:00.
It's not just grants, it's low-interest loans too, right?
Yeah, home repair program. There's a lot of programs. I always mention the three ones because it's the lowest bar, so it gets the attention. But there are certainly four or five good programs.
And the only other thing is just for the board's interest. You know, Gary and I have been working on this project with the Roof Trust and trying to get the supports in place so that we can finish our lighting project to the theater by the time we start our next round of productions in March. So there's a... Our fee out based on all the work that had been done by the Roofing Consultants. So Gary's been meeting with contractors and interested parties. So at your next meeting, we're hoping to have a contract for approval for that work, which will be some of the welding work to reinforce some of the existing trusses. So we can then get that final theatrical lighting installed and operational for the March productions.
That is? That work has nothing to do with the roof work itself?
The secondary roof work is the reinforcement work, and it's a larger project.
Okay.
And then replacing the membrane and fixing the drainage and the whole nine yards is a much, much larger project, and we're going to look for some additional funds.
Okay.
That was it?
Great. How's your progress? What kind of progress you making with the job description for Chuck's successor?
We posted zoning administrator vacancy and opening. So we'll see how we do with applicants. And we're hoping to at least have a first review sometime in the middle of January.
I've got a question. I saw your pressing on the legal citizen test. And it doesn't mention planner, planner, it just says zoning administrator. Are you putting those students on somebody else or what?
No, they'll be doing the planning. So we just didn't incorporate that into the title.
Okay.
So...
Does there any plan to put an ad in the paper? Maybe local, whether it's a reformer or the shopper?
We could certainly do it. I mean, I see some from, you know, some of the smaller communities around that do it, you know, from a circular...
Doesn't have to be an elaborate ad, just to say we're looking for somebody.
Right.
Might track somebody that's up in the woodwork there someplace.
Yeah, we have to keep those kind of small because they get pricey.
Yeah, yeah. They're expensive.
And Scott, your plan for the health officer pieces, are you still thinking that through?
Well, we have to talk to the village, I think, to really have a longer-term plan about that, about how we might potentially share a position. So I think that's going to be part of our joint board in January.
This is second beyond the joint board agenda, you think?
Yes. Yep.
Great. Any questions, Scott? I'm assuming you're finished?
Yes.
Oh, you didn't want to dress off?
No, I'm good.
Fine, okay. All right, moving right along. It's getting to the agenda. It's a review 2022 equalization study results. I guess Mr. Novo's got the lead on that. And there are two international letters in your package, so follow up. Head at it.
Come up here, folks, if you guys... I promised Scott that I would keep this short. He said an hour and 45 minutes was good. So I made notes after me. I wanted to first start with a brief reminder that in the past meeting, I told you that the listers had engaged in a value analysis, value engineering project to review everything we do so that we could make maximum use of Mr. Simon, obviously, the funds. That has netted us one remarkable change, which we've changed the structure of the lister's office to be a service organization versus a clerical office. And meaning that if you read your lister's handbook, it pretty well describes what we do for the state, but it says very little, if anything, about what we do for the departments in this office and particularly what we do for the citizens. So we've started that program. It is a very formal program with seven steps. And it requires some discipline and does not just get together and talk stuff over. It's used throughout the United States and industry, but I found that it is being used extensively by larger jurisdictions, mainly outside of this state. It works well. It's made us change the way we do things. And we have installed a hotline to the lister's office where anybody can call in and ask a question that relates to their problems. And we have a goal of answering every question in 24 hours. So far, we're 85% on target. We hit about 85% in eight hours. And then we get to it when they call us and they leave us a line message. We'll get to them the next morning. Working well, we think we're saving the taxpayers in the town a lot of money. And we're keeping track of that. And someday, when we get enough volume, we will have a better number. But it's remarkable what's happening. And it's mainly in helping taxpayers properly file their tax forms to get revenues in from the state. I think I probably might see checks come in in the household credits, which may not have come in before because the property owner has misstated their residence. And so now we track that. And we actually call them and say, "We notice you haven't filed for your own status." I'm assuming they filed. We show them how, we will help them, and it seems to work. There are many other areas. The other area we've improved, if you'll have looked on our website, the maps are different. They're new, they're much better. The maps have drop-down boxes where you can pull up all kinds of overlays of your property, including you can get the pictures that we use, the aerial photographs that are recorded. So we use those tools now to do our land and building surveys essentially from the outside. We get probably 90% of the information we need in our office as opposed to running around the street finding it. So that's coming. And I'll tell you in a minute what is coming, probably next week. But I want you to look. I think the town manager gave you a package of things to read. I'm not going to repeat them. I'm just going to point out a couple of things that you need to know. It'll help you understand what you see. You'll see the new stabilization report. It tells you our current CLA is 83.45 and our COD is 23.14. Those numbers mean anything to you? The CLA tells you how we have graded our properties or priced our properties in comparison to what they are selling for. You'll see that right now we are valuing property at 83.45% of what it's being sold for, meaning we're low. And COD is an expression of any disparity from the mean of that number. So if we go past 15%, we are mandated a new reappraisal. That's different than the last time. The state changed the legislation. We are now required to hold our assessments within 15%. Before, we were held at 20%. So this triggers a lot of reappraisals. Essentially, it begins to tell us that we're about 8% low and on an overall number. That's not bad, but you'll see it bumped this low, the target marks that the state has set. And since we bumped both of them, we were asked to do a reappraisal. We are not allowed to do a statistical reappraisal this time because we have been more than five years since the last appraisal. So we're going to do a townwide reappraisal. What we're doing now is a data verification experiment, which is also required. We're going around, we're looking at 300 specific properties that were randomly selected in town. And on the basis of those numbers, we'll decide whether we do 300 more. And this is not the reappraisal. This is strictly to verify that our cards are correct. Once we've done that, we'll move forward and do the whole talent. And we hope that we can shortcut it. And if we think we can come in within the budget that we have without looking for additional funds, I will tell you that our new listers, which everybody thought was going to be a mountain to climb to get two new listers at one time is a challenge. But I can tell you that the capacity of the current lister's office exceeds anything we've had 15 years. We are now doing things that could not be done before. And this has given us some time to do what needs to be done much better. We can thank the two other guys that they have put in a lot of effort, a lot of time of their own to study this, and the results are showing. The reappraisal is starting right now. Say today. We want to tell you what we're going to do so that you can tell anybody that asks. The data verification is walking around. We are not going inside of any house. Strictly an outside thing, mainly developing a new landscape. But we will check the condition and the quality from the outside of the house. But we will not be going inside. The people will be wearing traffic vests that are unique. In the town, when we do the village, the police department is notified where we are and who's there. So any taxpayer that has a problem with somebody walking around peeking at the rose bushes can call the police department and find out who it is, why they're there, and that we're not going in. We never travel alone. We always travel in a minimum of two, sometimes mostly now three, because this is also an educational effort for the new listeners. And we will never, even during the reappraisal, enter a house that is not hosted by the owner. This means it's not a renter. We will not enter a renter's apartment without the presence of the owner. This is to protect both our own people and their people. We will not go in a house where a 12-year-old girl says, "My mother said you could come in." That's not going to work. We are protecting both the people of the community and ourselves. And most importantly, and that to respect the town around here. So if you have any questions about that, you can send them to us. And we're not being standoffish, but we just think that's the safest way. Right now, folks are jumpy about people looking at their houses. We understand that, and we're trying to provide them with a method that tells them, "These people aren't walking around with blaze orange jackets and name tags because they're trying to set up some other activity." We're real, and we will be able to identify ourselves. That's... If this letter is included, I want to just show it to you. This is the state report on the equalization. It will explain to you how it's done. And if you can't understand it, and don't feel bad if you don't, come to our office. We'll be glad to sit down and explain the whole works to you. It's too complex to just talk about it in here. It's... The fundamentals are easy. The actual process is not. You will find on the new maps that I mentioned that you can access any residential property card on it. You can access anything you want to know about a residential building on the website. This has resulted in literally zero visits from businesses who use it all the time. They used to come in the office 6:00 a day. Doesn't happen. And that gives us more time. Because when somebody comes in our office and we direct it to one person, it doesn't disturb one person, it disturbs three. So it ties up the whole department by cutting down on just unwarranted come-in-and-get-a-record card. You can do it at home. You don't have to see us. And if you don't know how to do it, you can call us, we'll tell you how to do it. One person will tell you. It makes our department much more efficient, and that's what we're trying to do. So if you haven't tried it yourselves, play with it. It's incredible. We just added some dropped things that I think Gary may know about. But you now have the historic overlays on the map site. You can actually track every historic building in town on the website. What you can't track is commercial and industrial buildings. They are not on it. It's difficult to put them on. It's easy if you want to do it. You just tell the machine to put it on. But industrial and commercial property is valued on an income basis. Therefore, some of the material is personal and it's financial. We do not disclose financial data on anybody or anything. So those are excluded from the Freedom of Information Act. We should not, and we do not, release information that will in any way lead somebody into knowing how a business, once they're business. So until we find us nothing presenting that. You can find how much they're listed at, but you can't find anything about how we got there. There is a process and progress right now that bothers us a little. Current use is changing so fast that we can't keep up and need it from the people in Montpelier. So it's a bit confusing, but we'll get over it. The other one we're doing is the reappraisal of the hydro system. It's underway, it's been underway now for six weeks. Should get a preliminary answer this month. And that is the only property that we're involved in a outside assessment firm. It's the same one we've always used, is the Sansucci people. He's been here, we've been with him for the entire power structure in this town, not just a power plant, but all of the distribution systems, the three. And they are different owners, so we have different stuff. It's... We think, I did a personal study of that prior to Sansucci. His approach and mine are a little different. Obviously, he knows a lot more about it because he includes the effect of the entire Connecticut River. And I don't have that data. So we're close. I think we're $600,000 different. It looks like it's very stable. It's not going to go roaring up nor falling to the floor. But it's still a mystery because the per licensing thing is not complete. And depending on how they agree to use the water in the river, will change the income level of that plant. Stand by for future information. So what we need from the select board is be able to explain to a taxpayer who's reaching the road the things I've just told you. That we're identifiable, we're not going to run around town and bother anybody, and that there is a way for them to check. And that we are doing this as a data verification. We're not going to ask them to go under their houses. And after that's over, we will ask a random number for entry. That's your part. We are also going to involve the taxpayer themselves in the assessment. This is not totally new, but it's a little different. That we will provide the taxpayers with a proposed assessment or a draft assessment. And if they don't find it, we're going to ask them if our card matches their thoughts. If it doesn't, there will be an unofficial period of time when they can come in and talk to us about it. And before they leave, we hope we will both agree on what it is and cut back on the BCA-type hearings.
So how are you going to do, mail those out to people? Are you going to mail that to people in the mail-in?
In the end, we're going to mail it. Because we mailed the results. In the first place, we're going to ask the newspaper to put a little reminder in to check it.
Check it?
They will know what it is before we mail it.
Oh, they know that?
We're going to, as we go, we will. When, during the appraisal, we will get that through. So there won't be Christmas presents as to what the value has changed. To give you an idea that'll make you feel, I don't know, better or worse, we took a period of time from 2016 until Friday, and we tracked the sales in Rockhampton. What happened in 2018, there was a curve in the sales curve, meaning the number of houses sold. It curved up. It stayed on the same rather high slope. And then in 2019, in about the middle of the year, it started to fall over and it fell right on its back. In 2020, we went way back down. And then it's now climbing again, the number of sales is increasing. It's not yet way up to where it was. But what happened was the sales prices continue to rise. Just now, they hit a peak, and we can see them start to curve. And they're not flat, but they're beginning to drop off in price. So this is interesting. We then compared that with the national records. They're the same. The curves are identical. They're so close that you could hold them one over the other, and you can't tell the difference. So nationally, they're seeing the same thing. Vermont, we did the same thing for the state of Vermont. Same thing has happened. This town is no different than anybody else. The curves are the same. And the most important part was, in this equalization study, we have the equalization studies for every town in the state of Vermont. What has happened is this number, 3.145, that you see on every report, our number is two points different than 165 towns in the state of Vermont. That's all the differences. This state is, we are not an island in this state. Everybody's going through the same thing. And then that result is that as of this letter, the state has issued orders to 165 towns to reevaluate their properties. The 252 towns here that do this, 165 are currently ordered to reappraise, and 20 of them have just finished the reappraisal. They're the only ones that are notably not being asked. So we are not an island. We're not experiencing anything that is strange. It's all due to the increase in the market. The market has shifted. We can tell you why. Two reasons. One reason is a lot of people who have extra investments are moving out of stock markets and going into hard stuff like land and houses. Some of them are moving here, planning to stay. Some of them are just playing second homes. It shows up on all our PTTRs. Very common, there are outliers once in a while. We call these people, ask them what story they... They're free open. So I'm happy with our, being this number, it tells me that at least we're not doing something wrong. And I think you guys can be proud of that. It's part of the community. The community has helped us. We don't have a... We look at a taxpayer as a team member as opposed to a competitor. And that makes all the difference in all. So that's our report for 2024. 23, 24, the next year's coming up, there's an encouraging thing going on. There's an encouraging thing going on. We are now building houses. First time in years we see new houses being put up and it is May, but it's three and that's a start. So, and I think of the three we're building, two are for local people.
Rick, you had a question for?
Well, yeah. First of all, this GIS thing is amazing. I just looked at my house on it. I'm amazed at what, what the citizens can pull out of this from the town website. So kudos on that. Second, are we saving a lot of money by doing the reappraisal in-house versus I know other towns hire outside?
My guess is we're saving approximately 150,000.
Wow.
And most reappraisers are $10 a parcel. So we have 3,000 parcels from these $300,000 if you hire an outside company. We prefer to avoid that.
Well.
The one, the one interesting, the one interesting side note is that in the state of Vermont, there are only four towns that have a lister onboard certified to do their own appraisal. So my extreme salary is going to save you a few bucks, but we appreciate it. Hopefully my objective, as you know, I'm running for office again. My objective is to train the new guys to be able to do the same when I leave. That's what I'm trying to accomplish, any person.
Last, last question. The River Hydro sold about 12 or 13 dams. The profit was about $915 million that they made on that deal. My research has indicated. We only value that dam in terms of the income that it produces for the company. What about the value of the asset itself, which is according to the sale price has dramatically increased?
How do you know that?
I have a friend who was involved with the FERC process.
Glad you did. Tell them to send me the data.
I will, I will. This guy, this guy's got many years experience. I don't, I don't want to get into how I don't know.
No, I'm just going to tell you an example of why I say that. Number one, where mandated on how we appraise it. It's got to be by the income approach. The income approach is not the money they make, but what they keep because they spend a lot. So it's their net income, not the gross. That's the first one that goes most people. The other part is it was advertised that they bought it for 2.6 million, something like that. You had a B. What's that?
Is that a D?
No, the whole system or just our dam?
The whole system is what they paid for. If you use that number, you did real great. It included two plants in Massachusetts. It's not the same as what it looks and you need to really get into that. And I can tell you that Mr. Sansucci can tell you how many bottles of coffee they buy. It, it, it's incredible. Yeah.
Because I'd be curious to know because the, you know, River Hydro made a killing on that, that purchasing that system and then reselling it to great to.
They spent a lot of money on it too. We just went through this one. It is remarkable condition. They have not, they have not abused it.
And electricity produced by non-fossil fuel sources is suddenly becoming very, very, very valuable. As all the mandates kick in. So I'm hoping that Mr. Sansucci can, he obviously will, but the change of value, I think in those facilities has been dramatic.
We're going to estimate this thing on what's known as a discounted cash flow basis, which means that we're going to plan to look at the cash flow for this company for the upcoming 10 years. And that way we see what happens and we, we wouldn't recommend to the select board. And Scott and I are working on this, so I can't speak with Scott. But we could, somebody could try to trap us into having a long-term stabilization agreement. But we know some things are going to happen that may increase that company's value in five to six years, but it won't occur now. It can't be done in that time frame. So this, this stabilization agreement may want to be limited in time. And I think after we get Sansucci's report, we can come up with a better target.
Great.
Both for us and them. We need to protect them. You can't use them as a cash cow and say, yippee ki-yay, we got you. Because they aren't fact taxpayers. They are quote unquote a taxpayer citizen. And what are you going to do with that thing if they shut it off?
Right.
It isn't big enough to be critical. They can do without it. And so we just have to be fair and reasonable is the answer. Equitable. It will be equal to other plants. So that's the nut we're trying to get to.
Thanks. That's, that's helpful.
Okay. Any questions, Paul? So we can move along here. We've got a good discussion going on. Okay. Paul, move on. Moving on, Paul.
How long did that, how long did that take?
A little more than five.
There you go. But not much. Not an hour and 45.
Put it in the credits for next time.
Okay, moving along, Gary. The budget review, I see Sheriff Anderson is still with us, I hope. Matt gets the picture up there. He first on the, on the agenda for the budget review as a discussion of Public Safety Services Contract. So Scott, will you lead into it?
So as you all know, I put a copy of just the sheriff's report that he gives to the communities that he does have service contracts with. Saxon River is one. So spoke to Amy and she said, sure, you guys can take a look and see this is what, you know, they get sort of as a annual review of the activities that the sheriff's office performed for them under their current agreement. And so we've had a lot of conversation with residents and Mayor Rockingham about concerns for public safety concerns. So wanted to have an opportunity to bring the sheriff in and have a conversation with the board. And ultimately we did include an item for your consideration later in the meeting to add a article for the general consideration as we go forward in town meeting. So.
Hey Mark, I guess you can describe sort of what we're trying to accomplish here, if you know that. I assume Scott's been in touch with you on that. But the board may have some other questions in regards to the speeding enforcement issue that it's a little separate than what we're talking here for the patrol issues. And it's an article on the town media morning.
Sure. Thank you. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Mark Anderson. I am the sheriff of now about three years. Been with the sheriff's department since 2004. Just a real brief description of what the sheriff's office does because I find in my day-to-day talks, most people have a, an understanding of what we do. That's not necessarily entirely accurate. So by statute, I'm responsible for serving the civil process, i.e. the court's paperwork or civil paperwork for the county as well as transporting prisoners. After that, I'm not really funded to do anything. And those are also both funded through alternative means than a direct tax for, as you're, you're used to dealing with. My office is empowered to enter into contracts for a variety of things. And that is a representation of a majority of what we do. From the hip, I'm guessing that's probably about 70, 80% of the revenue that we bring in is by contracts. And so that's where we provide law enforcement services, dispatching services. That's where you'll see deputies assisting, construction companies on the interstate as paving projects are going on, bridge projects, massive, massive pieces of equipment such as the decommissioning of the power plant in Vernon. We're assisting with escorting equipment and materials as required under a variety of different circumstances. The flexibility of contracting, I'm sure all of you are familiar with contracting in some form of, of town governance. So I won't get into too much other than to say we can basically build it to, to what suits the town. We have contracts as small as a couple thousand dollars for a year, which is just very minor presence in a community. All the way up to we have provided a 24/7 policing service, 911 response, investigations, the whole nine yards. At the end of the day, I have a, a cost. I know that the select board is familiar with identifying what something costs and then you develop a budget for it. So fundamentally, our contracts work in the same sense. There is a cost to the service we provide for the personnel, the insurances, the fuel, the equipment, the uniforms. So cost is X and then what you want to turn that contract into would be to support that cost. The, so that's the, the broad 50,000 foot level of what we can do, which is just about anything legal that makes sense for us to do. Specific to.
Go ahead.
Specific to the town of Rockingham's issues, you have a population of roughly 5,000 with the police department that covers the village of Bell's Falls. So the village police department does not cover the town per se. I'm sure that there's nuance to that, which you would understand better than I would. But to that end is a separate service. And so surely we could provide support either as a supplemental or a primary coverage to the town of Rockingham. I think it would be wise for us if we want to explore this relationship to start off towards the smaller end of the spectrum. Given a town the size of Rockingham and the issues, I would suspect you're looking somewhere in about the $10,000 range as a floor. And that would be probably targeting a presence as well as the various traffic safety issues that have been identified.
Hey, just for the benefit of some of the people that are here, the article on the town warning is for $6,000. I assume Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but from conversation that it's going to be townwide. Patroling basically, maybe just a swing through. It's eight hours a month. So 96 hours a year, roughly at 62 bucks an hour is what the rate we, right, I assume the, the current rate is. Average is out to about $6,000. So could you kind of tell us what that entails and then go into a little bit on this speeding enforcement program that's out there?
Sure. And I just want to qualify one thing. I'm saying $10,000 assuming it was a contract to cover the entire town of Rockingham. As you're aware, I do contract with the village of Saxon's River. The village of Bell's Falls has its own policing. So to that end, not excluding the village policing from my, my $10,000 quote. $6,000 is an unreasonable amount as a starting point to assess what you need. The, the way we provide services is supplemental to the coverage that's received by the Vermont State Police for the town of Rockingham. So that would be in all towns except for, or I'm sorry, all towns and the whole town and village, except for Bell's Falls, who receives its primary services from Bell's Falls PD. So with a supplemental contract, when we're present, we help you. When we're not present, calls defer to the state police. The state police would be your primary 911 responder. We would not receive 911 calls. And so what that gives us the flexibility to do is schedule our patrols in the town in areas at times that makes sense to address the speeding issues we've received. I can't give a, a broad explanation of the issues that the town currently has from a personal level, but we have received some inquiries to our office around Bartonsville, Cambridge Port, along some of the, the state highways on Pleasant Valley Road and Saxon's River. Or outside of Saxon's River. And I think it's, it's somewhat telling of the times. These are not unique complaints anywhere in the county. I'm talking to my counterparts across the state. We've seen since 2020, a significant increase in aggressive driving, high speeds, recklessness, impaired driving.
So is the, if we were talking as you just explained, it would be the outward limits of the town of Rockingham, which is Cambridge Port, Bartonsville, rural Rockingham with the exception of Saxon River. So that would be what the vote on the town warning would be for. So then with that, it's going to be eight hours. So like it would probably patrol like two hours a week. I'm guessing that's what sort of averages out to if it's eight hours a month.
I'm not good at math in my head. I'm trusting you on the math, but it sounds about right. It's not a significant amount and speaking from a premise of traffic safety, we rely on what I call a three-legged stool. One leg is engineering, one leg is education, and then the third leg is enforcement. That's a pretty standard model coming from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Without any one leg, the system fails. So that's why we call it a stool. The problem with two hours for, for the, the size of Rockingham, and this isn't unique to other towns in Wyndham County. And I'm not saying that we need to build the number up. I'm just, I want to be clear that two hours of enforcement each week or each month or each week is not a significant amount to, to really support that stool. The, if there's a desire for, for an immediate impact because of enforcement, there are engineering solutions that are available, speed feedback signs. I'm sure you've seen it on, on the main drag of Bell's Falls. Those are the signs that read out your speed. They are effective at, at reducing speed on highly, high-volume roads. However, there are also examples where people see the sign and then it becomes what high score can I get? And so they accelerate when they see the signs. So again, these are all complementary to each other. It's not one replaces the other. And I don't want to, to offer that two hours each week would provide for a noticeable reduction with any immediacy.
Well, we noticed, I mean, I live in Bartonsville, so I see this problem all the time and also see it on the other feeder roads, particularly the ones that feed. People are going onto 91. They cut from Springfield and other parts. But would it make sense, you know, to just sort of instead of two hours a week, sort of have, spread it out? So you start with, we know the hours that people are speeding the most. And so you front load it by saying, okay, you're going to have a heavy presence in the beginning of the contract on those areas that are speeding. And then you do that for a matter of weeks or however, whatever makes sense. And then you, then you, so it's not a constant every week for two hours. It's, it's spread out over time, but more concentrated in the beginning. Or at periods where we know that, I mean, we really are concerned that in the summertime when we're walking on these very narrow roads, that's a big concern, then a little more less concern. And, you know, when we're not on the roads, pedestrians and bikes, the bikes are not on the roads and windmill as well. Not that it's not, they're not speeding, but. Does that make sense?
It, it does make sense. So we have, we have done saturation models. That's what I'm going to call what you just described. Where we are heavily loaded, you'll see multiple cruisers even in town at any given point. The, the thing I guess I'll say is that again, what even if we go with a 96-hour contract, 96 hours, if we did that in three months' time, it's still not a significant, a significant presence when we consider the amount of hours that we're actually not present. What we're trying to do with saturation patrols is create a belief of, a belief that there is a consequence should a person violate the law. We can't obviously be present 100% of the time. That's not a surprise as we look at communities that do have 24/7 policing. But we do see deterrence when there is that belief that you can be held accountable for, for a speed that you're driving. I'm also again, not advocating for any amount for you to, to vote on. Starting at 6,000, roughly $6,000 is within the realm of what we have. I just, I do want to caution what the effect is versus the desired goal.
In your report to Saxon's River, you said that you've been asked to provide 26,080 hours. And your previous average of service provided was 14,000 hours. So my question is, will you have the capacity to do this? And adjunct to that is that I know you're working through some issues with the town of Westminster about providing them with sufficient service and they've expressed some dissatisfaction with that. So are you, would you really be able to add another 96 hours to your schedule and deliver it?
So 96 hours across a year, that would be a fairly easy lift for us. We are currently full staffed. We're one of the few agencies in the region that are in that situation. With regards to the town of Westminster, I think it's important to clarify that there's a misunderstanding of the number of hours they expected us to provide versus what they contracted for. And that was due to the transition of the former town manager and. And that was due to the transition of the former town manager and uh, long story short, certain messages didn't get passed. Um, not anyone's fault, it was a circumstance of time, but uh, expectations didn't meet realities uh, on their contract. Which is where uh, there were some perceptions uh, for them. Uh, I will say the year prior for Westminster, we were understaffed, and so then we weren't able to deliver the full contract amount, which is. Um, I mean, we're constantly fighting a battle, um. Uh, I won't get too deep into the weeds, but uh, a quick explanation of our hiring practice, it takes about a year for me to uh, uh, recruit, train. And then implement a person, so if you call me today and say, I want a full-time person, I'm gonna need about twelve months. Um, that's a loose number, but uh, that's expectation. Currently, I have roughly forty people, uh, all my staff is about forty people last year, uh. Well, I'll say last July, we're at about thirty, uh, so we scaled up uh, in anticipation of certain things increasing. Um, this year, we had uh, the right amount of staff for everything that we engaged in, but we didn't have the right amount of staff for us, all the things we didn't know were going to come to us. Uh, of the twenties, the extra uh, twenty-six thousand hours, we haven't signed contracts with all those entities. Uh, we're certainly engaging the possibility and we're talking about that twelve-month conversation with them.
Okay, one, one last question, the uh, when this comes before the uh, the voters at town meeting, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of questions and, and. Will you be able to be there to answer some of those questions?
I would be happy to come, uh, the, it's generally our practice to circulate through our towns. Uh, for town meeting day, uh, to answer questions uh, for any of the bodies. Uh, not knowing what the uh, lineup is going to be this year. Um, I might wanna just coordinate with the town manager to say, I can be here for this time if I can be taken either outside of the. Um, outside of the, the standard rules, um, but I'm happy to, to schedule Rockingham uh, to be in attendance in person.
Thank you, that would be a great help.
Um, a while back, um, I can't remember when it was, but um, cause I know you transport a lot of prisoners to Springfield. And the Wyndham County sheriffs would take some of the feeder roads, instead of hopping back on ninety-one, they would go. The um, Pleasant Valley Road over into um, or Springfield Pleasant Valley Road into um, to Bartonsville or Parker Hill Road. Or Brockway's Mills, and that just gives a pay occasionally, people say there's a chance I might see. A sheriff on this road, whereas now people know there's no chance you're gonna see a police car in any of these feeder roads, because they're just not there usually. Is that something that was, is possible to do, or are you, your transports are so timed that you really gotta get them there and get them back as quickly as possible?
Uh, so a few things, um. One of the, one of the changes post COVID is that there's been more video arrangements, which has been a reduction in our transports. And while they're not gone, is um, it's been a reduction, so that might be why you're experiencing a, a lesser uh, lesser visualization. Uh, unrelated, um, unrelated thing is that my agency operates the uh, regional highway task force. Uh, which uh, includes four other law enforcement agencies, including the Bell's Falls Police Department. Uh, and that operates countywide regardless of whether or not we contract, uh, so. It, it's incidental, but I think we just made three arrests in, in Rockingham within the last month. Um, we're present in Rockingham right now, where I, we've identified some of these uh, areas because they fall within the scope of the grant that we use. Uh, and we have been targeting those, um, so. Uh, I, I guess what I wanna say is that we haven't really left Rockingham, but to that point, this is what I'm saying, is that the presence. Um, based on the amount of hours that you're uh, putting in your warning or suggesting to put in your warning, you may wanna contemplate that. That it might not be enough. And it may be, be worthwhile for that to be addressed at the, uh, on the floor of town meeting, especially since this is considering a new. Uh, a new relationship for something that hasn't happened. Again, I don't wanna sit here and say, no, let's go with more, I don't like to recommend what any town should do. Uh, you're better understanding the, the burdens that your taxpayers are facing. Um, but to be the, the answer to the solution, I don't think that the amount will be very effective.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but as explained to me, there is a, a patrol contract we're discussing currently. And then there's some sort of a state or federal program that, that targets speeding and enforcement is. Am I, uh, could you kind of go into what that would do for us, or, or would it even affect it?
Uh, so we are discussing two separate things, but what I'm bringing up is that we do currently have a presence in Rockingham. Through a federal grant that we receive, um, and that targets very specific behaviors for driving around impaired driving, distracted driving. Uh, failure to wear a seatbelt restraint device, um, those items, so we are using them in some places uh, in Rockingham. Uh, you are receiving those benefits, you've been receiving those benefits for. At least my entire career, um, that, that's nothing new, um. So what you'd be contemplating with a, a contract uh, for patrol uh, would be in addition to services that you already receive. And the problems you're already identifying uh, based on uh, the current circumstances.
Hey, does anyone else have any questions during the share, uh, Elijah?
Uh, what type of reporting would you um, provide on the services? I know it's, it's not very, very many hours, but. Would you be able to identify, you know, what dates you've been in town or how?
Yeah, so a few things for reporting, uh, number one, in terms of when we would be using, uh. Using the funds, we have a system called the Sheriff's Town Activity Reporting System, it's an electronic system. That uh, the town would have access to, uh, you can log in through a website, uh, and ultimately see the reports as they come through. Uh, so that is uh, already uh, there, and we build it based off of uh. Deputy's timesheet, so for them to get paid, they have to uh, write the report, um, because their time sheet's derived from the report. Uh, that is, we try to have it uh, updated daily, uh, some days it might be a couple of days behind, um. But again, you have uh, immediate access to that, each month we provide you with a copy of that report, uh, which shows the deduction. Uh, deductions in the time uh, from this contract. Uh, so that's one version of reporting, we can provide a reporting based on the types of violations we're observing. I, I mean, we have a, a records management system that uh, is able to uh, be very granular in the information where it's occurring. Um, some of it we can't release publicly, some of it we can, uh, and then. Um, a third part is, uh, and this ties back to the highway safety grant I was talking about, we have. I believe it's six devices now, uh, that collect data, uh, I'm sure you've seen them. Uh, in some way, shape or form, Wyndham Regional also has a, a variety of devices that they put out. Uh, and those are all put out at no cost to the town, uh, but what they do is they collect data, um. Uh, like Ms. Hammond uh, mentioned, uh, collect the data so that we can be very, uh. I, I guess, uh, intentional about when we would schedule patrols for all occasions. Uh, we would need to collect the data first and identify what places would need what responses when. The, um, just speaking as a bit of uh, understanding of, of the county, uh. Route thirty, it delivers traffic to three ski areas. Uh, so at the end of the day, we're very familiar with traffic being Friday nights and Sunday afternoons. Uh, and we can almost dial it into the month, uh, that we need to start scheduling patrols for those weekends. Um, not to say we don't schedule patrols on those weekends, uh, outside of ski season, we just know that the demand shifts uh, significantly, so. Uh, those data collection devices allow us to be able to, to target and be very uh, uh, conservative with the town's. Uh, resources, uh, so that we can make the best out of it that we can.
And just one more question, um, for the speeding tickets, it's, it's still that the town receives a portion of those fees, is that's correct? And if so, for instance, like Saxons River, there was, I don't know how many of those were tickets. But just, this is a way to sort of um, balance the bunch, you know, how much. Not that we can predict what that income is, but some of this six thousand could potentially be um, afraid by the speed tickets, correct?
Correct, so I'm smiling because one time I asked the Vermont judiciary, uh, how we come to the calc, or what's the formulas that they use? And they said, you have to refer to your town's legal counsel, um, so I'm not an attorney, this is not a, an attorney's opinion. Um, I am giving my layman's uh, assessment of what we see. Uh, speeding violations written under municipal ordinance, uh, there's a, an amount of money that can be returned to the municipality. Uh, making a couple assumptions, one is that the ticket's paid, um, if it's not paid, you don't get anything. Um, and that it's paid timely, and we've seen tickets take two, three, four years to be paid, so. Uh, there can be delay, uh, but that said, uh, generally, a majority of tickets are paid. Uh, our rough assessment is about sixty percent of the, the face value of the ticket is returned to the town, um. The formula that I once understood is that you subtract the state's waiver fee out of it, uh, you, I think, take, there might be another percentage you take out of it. Uh, and then the town gets eighty percent of that remaining amount, um, again, my rough estimate is about sixty percent of the face value, give or take. Uh, five percent is probably a, a reasonable number to look at. Um, I do caution towns not to consider that to be the offsetting, uh, the offsetting way to, to do these. It is a, I, I consider it the, the benefit, um, that the town receives, but not the goal. Uh, the goal is to obviously target public safety issues to, to identify the, the concerns that your uh, constituents have, um, and address those. If this does offset the uh, the, the budgeted amount, great, I don't want to create uh, an expectation. That revenue is going to be generated by this all the time, because then we have nothing more than a speed tax.
Okay, is there any other further questions from Mark before we uh, let him?
I have a question, hi, sorry, I'm on Zoom, uh, Jennifer. Hi, thank you for your time, I'll make it quick. Um, if we were to even go with the, the lowest estimate of the, I think it was ninety-six hours a month or what have you. How does that, that cost get absorbed if we vote on it? I mean, like, if we vote, is it Rockingham, the street, uh, you know, our street on Bartonsville absorbing that cost? Or is it the, the residents that are not part of Bellows or Saxons who are absorbing that tax?
Everybody near town would be putting the bill.
Right, but what does town encompass is what my question?
Townwide with the exception of uh, policing in Saxons River and Bell's Falls.
No, but they, the taxpayers, townwide, even residents of Ellis Falls and Saxons River would be paying.
It would be in their base.
It'd be in their base tax. What, point zero, zero, one, five cents or something, it's about two bucks maybe, to your taxes, if your house is worth a hundred fifty thousand, something like that.
Okay, any other questions from the audience or?
Hi, my name is Ms. Spalding, I live on Parker Hill Road, I've been there for forty years and I'm here tonight for two reasons. And one is to represent um, Parker Hill Road residents. We have had an extreme amount of vandalism, cars broken into, the converters stolen and cut off of our vehicles. And also a few nights ago, an intruder inside of a house, where one of our residents walked into the house unarmed. And this man um, ran out and uh, there was a stolen vehicle there, and it's really getting scary. I've been there forty years and I've never seen anything like this, and um, I was just hoping that, and I loved your idea very much about. The different routes, you know, going, um, I think that would be great because you're doing two things at one time. You're actually using um, the, the time of transporting prisoners across Parker Hill Road. And when they see your presence, these people, and more of it, I think it would be a great idea to do that. And I'm so thankful you brought that up, so I would just like to, um, I told the residents, we have a lot of people in the eighties and disabled on the hill. Longtime residents, and I told them I was coming tonight, and they asked if you could do exactly that. When you use that route, maybe a little, you know, a change to come across Parker Hill. There is um, signal with Verizon all the way to the end now, I don't know about AT&amp;T, but I, I appreciate you listening to me. And thank you so much for the work that you do do.
Yeah, we respond to that, Mark, or?
I, I do, I, I do, uh, and I wanna be respectful of the board's time. Um, so I, I can't speak definitively, cause I don't have any metric that tells me when a person does drive across Parker Hill Road. Um, I'll talk to my deputies, um, just to see if we're continuing that practice, but I have no reason to believe we are not. Um, again, there's just a less volume because there's less transports and that's, I can't control that. Um, that said, I, I, I'm gonna get on my soapbox for just a minute, uh, to talk about rural policing in Vermont, there's basically none. Um, uh, that's not to be, uh, uh, insulting to uh, any of the organizations uh, that provide policing. The state police uh, have been expected to be a law enforcement agency to six hundred fifty thousand people. With a staffing that is far smaller than any uh, agency uh, in this, the United States that would be expected to serve that size. Um, to rely on them for service is um, near impossible, uh, I'm quoting the Commissioner of Public Safety. He, he referred to what they provide as a rudimentary police force. There's no requirement for towns to provide policing, it's a choice. And so one of the things, uh, one of the initiatives that my office is undertaking, uh, and I'd be happy to invite the town of Rockingham to the meeting, we're scheduling it. Uh, I believe the first week of February, I can get the town manager the, the date, um, or the select board, whom- whomever makes sense. Uh, but what we're gonna be doing is scheduling a conversation, just a discussion, I don't have any decision-making authority in this. Um, to say, uh, we, uh, that rural policing pretty much doesn't exist. And now let's talk about how we can improve it, because I've heard numerous stories about people who's had their catalytic converter stolen. Heard numerous stories about break-ins, about drug issues, about uh, needles being found in, in places that families are walking, about people being run off the road. About domestic violence, about sexual assault, and what we're currently doing just doesn't make sense. What we can do, I think, does make sense, um, if I were to take all the contracts I currently have, it would fund a single deputy twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. But it's not a fair assessment to the towns that are currently paying it. So I believe that there's an initiative that we could undertake under a regional level that would provide more access to policing. That is also mindful of uh, the, the taxpayers' uh, uh, money. Um, but in a way that we're providing the service that people continuously call my office for, and I've just, I've never seen it like this before. Um, so that's my soapbox, I'm happy to invite you to that conversation, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Thank you so much.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing an earing on Mark, I guess you're free to leave us if you so desire, and we do appreciate your time and, and uh, very informative.
Thank you, take care.
Okay, move along here to review the higher made Rockingham Meeting House capital project budget.
So we've got Walter on Zoom, I think he'll, he can jump on here with uh. I'll unmute him so he can talk. Walter, can you hear us?
Here I am.
So Walter provided a pretty detailed memo, and this is not new information to the board, we've been talking about this for a period of time. But now we're at a point where we have to uh, make some budget decisions that relate to. The larger uh, grant opportunities that, that Walter's been working on, as well as from our presentation. From our uh, structures report where we were informed of, you know, fairly significant. Uh, projects that need to be undertaken to really preserve this building. And keep it in, in a, a condition that the public can access the building and still. Make it a viable place for people to gather, so. The, the details are in the memo, I thought maybe Walter might wanna jump in from there and maybe sort of move us along.
Thank you very much, Scott, for that introduction, uh, if I may uh, say that I was hoping on being. At the meeting in person, but uh, the roads are very icy between here and Bellows Falls and um. Uh, up here where I live in Springfield, and I do not want to take the risk of driving down. But I did wanna be present and offer any uh, uh, answers to questions that folks might have. About the uh, uh, current situation of uh, uh, the. Preservation of the meeting house. Um, I think that the email, the memo that I wrote uh, outlines uh, what. The current situation is as regards the uh, earmark that uh, Senator Sanders' office was able to. Uh, carve out for us, and then Senator Leahy uh, protected uh, through the uh, uh. Omnibus bill passage that happened just before Christmas, literally two days before Christmas. And uh, uh, we now have an opportunity to build upon that carve-out. Uh, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been uh, provided to the town. Uh, from uh, the people in the country, the nation who we, if you will. from the people in the country, the nation who we, if you will, preserve the meeting house for. There, there is an opportunity here to build upon that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars and address some of the preservation issues that we have with the meeting house.
Okay, well, just to bring people up to speed here, after that presentation from Papezian and the other people from Wyndham Regional. Code project for repair for the whole Rockingham House is a million something, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Million two, something like that, developed?
Between one point two and one point five million.
Okay, this this, just to start to this, the three sixty that we've got the earmark for and the money that we're attempting to raise via taxes and the other money that's in the already in their budget and we're taking some money from ARPA funds. So that will get us roughly around, hopefully, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards that mark, which is about halfway home. Just just so people will know where it's at, and I can let you can expand from there if you like, but this.
If I may, there are, there are some decisions that need to be made within the next thirty to sixty days around how we proceed with the Save America Treasures Grant and other funding opportunities to be able to provide the funding that we need in order to do the preservation work. We can, I think, one pathway that that the town could follow is to proceed with and meet the earmark, three hundred and sixty thousand, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar match that will provide us with the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to allow us to do some of the really critical preservation efforts that need to be done from the very get-go. The foundation stabilization, the window preservation, and some of the emergent exterior framing and sheathing issues that that could take care of that. We could then, if you will, piece together a stack that would include poss, going for other funding from other sources like a Paul Bruin grant, a Cynthia Martin grant, some other grant opportunities that are available that we can then continue the the project to completion over the next eighteen to twenty-four months. The other op, the other pathway that we could follow is to thank Senator Sanders' office for setting aside the earmark, setting aside the the three sixty. And we could proceed in the next round of funding with the Save America Treasures and go for a full five hundred thousand up to a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar ask. But that would then require us to consider a dollar for dollar match, either with cash or with in-kind match to meet that seven hundred and fifty. If we were to wait, let's say, until next December to submit a proposal for Save America Treasures Grant. And I think that based on the current conditions report, as well as on the upcoming historic structure report, we will be able to demonstrate clearly the need for a grant upwards of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Save America Treasures, which would then be halfway to what we need to do the preservation work. But we would need also then to come up with a dollar-for-dollar match, again, either cash or in-kind to match the seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I think over the next several months, we will, the town will need to decide, do we want to pursue the earmark at three sixty and match to three sixty? Or do we want to defer and wait until next December and apply for a seven hundred, upwards of a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant request that would then require us to up our cash match up to seven fifty? I hope that that makes sense.
Yeah, it does to me anyway. So if we were to wait and do that, does that mean that we then bypass the three sixty that we've already supposedly gotten? Or is that?
Yes, yes, we would need to bypass the, that's a very, yeah. That's, that's a very important question, Peter, because the Save America Treasures Grant project is only eligible for one shot. If we go for the three sixty, we go for the earmark, we cannot go back to Save America Treasures. We can go back to Pope, we we cannot go back to the Save America Treasures Grant program. We can go to other opportunities, but we cannot go back to the Save America Treasures Grant. So if we decide to go for the earmark and we're, we will succeed, that is guaranteed at this point. We cannot go back and ask for more money from from that particular program.
So with that, we've taken, I've lost my train of thought. Do you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say that, I mean, there's no guarantee that if we say no to this, we're gonna hold off for another year, that we will get that seven hundred and fifty. It's a whole of Congress. We don't have Senator Leahy there anymore. And then, as you said, you have to find this other funding. But is it, if you take this Save America Treasure Grant, does that does that, are we still available for some of the other directed, I forget what they call them in Congress, the directed grants? Congressional directed grants, which I know, like Leahy did, to help his library up up north. So that type of funding would be available, say, after we deal with these emergencies?
It is my understanding that we would be eligible for other congressionally-directed spending requests other than the Save America Treasures. In other words, if if we get the SAT, which is now guaranteed to us because the omnibus bill was passed, that money is now in place. We we can count on that. We cannot return and ask for CDSR, or we cannot apply for a grant for another SAT grant. But we can go to other opportunities that might come up, like a Paul Bruin grant. Or I understand, and I will be pursuing over the next several weeks, opportunities that might be available through the Department of Agriculture and some other infrastructure-related funding streams.
When would you need to make that decision, whether you take or reduce this value, the three sixty? Or can we just do it now?
I am, I am, I am under, I've been consulting directly with Haley Perro, who's the outreach person from Senator Sanders' office. I'm given to understand that it will probably be in March that the National Park Service will be able to sort things out and will be approaching us late March or early April saying, okay, you, you, you have the carve-outs, you have this grant opportunity. You now need to proceed with preparing the formal proposal. So I'm gonna say that by the end of March, early April, will be the next major decision point, just right after town meeting.
Okay, Rick?
Walter, if we get the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we we have the SAT carve-out and the taxpayers go ahead with the hundred and three. What, what will be accomplished? At town meeting, they're gonna wanna know, if we vote for this, will the foundation, will it be? Will you be able to break out from the Papezian report, what can be accomplished with that money?
At this point, what I see that we can address from the Papezian report is the foundation work, the window work, and some of the emergent exterior wood fabric issues that where there's some rot going into the sheathing and into the southeast corner post. So it will be able to deal, we'll, we will be able to address some significant basic issues with, to stabilize the building.
Thank you.
We can then build upon, it's my sense, if if I may just continue with that. My thinking on it is that we might then be able to build upon Paul Bruin and some other opportunities to be able to do some of the other less expensive elements of the preservation work, like the plaster work, any kind of painting, any kind of interior woodwork.
Okay, well, that's pretty informative, Walter. I guess we got what we gotta do. So, Mark, we'll take it from there. Lloyd, do you have a question?
This particular grant opportunity, the Save America's Treasures Grant, I think this is the, pretty much the largest grant that is available, from what I see. Paul Bruin grant is, I think, up to a hundred thousand in those tiers that has come out. The Save America's Treasure Grant is a one-time grant. When you get it once, you never go back for it again. So, yeah, if we go through for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you know, this that is.
If we get, if we get this three sixty, we can.
Back and ask them for the same, you can knock hundred or forty.
Not the same grant program, but you can go back for congressional directed funding to Peter or or Bernie's office.
But basically, just to make sure though, we most people that get the Save America's Treasures Grant go through a formal grant application. We shall kind of on a usual kind of backdoor method of getting there by getting it, you know, through the congressionally-directed spending. But we can, we can go with the other route and apply for the larger amount. You know, just just to make it more options clear, you know, we can, instead of accepting this, we can apply for a larger amount up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar action grant.
But then we're competing nationwide.
Then you're competing nationwide.
And we have, we have to come up with another seven hundred thousand, match it, right?
The only thing I'll caution the the board on is don't forget with the ARPA funds, we do have a clock ticking. You have to spend your money by twenty twenty-four, so it doesn't sound like it's, you know.
Right.
But that time does come up.
Gary, you're flapping over there.
Well, yeah, just really quickly, another data point to the ARPA match funds running out is that the last year, there's data on grants actually given out this year seventeen. There were, there's about twenty-six hundred national historic landmarks in the country. It doesn't have to be that for an award, but this year seventeen, there were a hundred forty-one applications to the Saving American Treasures and twenty awards nationwide. So just an idea of the risk and competitiveness that you're rolling the dice on if you don't have.
Take what we can get off and go from there and build from there. I think that's the way we hope we can go.
We pretty much have the match now if taxpayers agree, so.
Okay, is there any other further questions?
So we give a grant for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that are already employed, I guess. And that we have to have matching of two hundred and sixty thousand.
Exactly.
So can you explain where the other money's coming?
Well, one is an article for a hundred and three thousand. It's on the town warning for.
This is coming here.
Right. We're gonna do that when you get to the tax rate, because that's two cents of the tax rate increase that we're talking about. Plus two other areas that are, those are for reserve funds, but we'll go into that later.
It's on the sheet that.
There's a hundred and fifty thousand that we're gonna allocate from ARPA, the ARPA four hundred and forty thousand, I think the town has that we got. We're gonna have to be allocating that, so there's two hundred, three hundred fifty-three thousand. There's a hundred and nine thousand that we got in the reserve fund already for the meeting house. So adding all that together, we're pretty close to three sixty, maybe twenty, thirty thousand, but we need that line. But I think Walt's working on that, so if anything comes out, you should be able to get it, Walt said, the necessary cut down.
Except for a hundred and three thousand dollars, town of Rockingham has the matching funds, except for a hundred and three thousand.
Right, you're gonna, as an article, it's gonna be on voting. And that, and that, that's how it's gonna work. Right, and thank you. Okay, anybody else? Walter, last comments? Or are you done?
I have no further comment other than to thank the select board for considering the project, the way that it's been evolving. And I do want to alert the select board as well as the community that there will be sometime, probably in January, perhaps in February, another community gathering that'll be advertised. And we'll, we will invite the community to come in and engage in that conservation conversation. We've already had two such meetings last year that kind of got us to this point. And I would like to see if the, I would like, I'm hoping that the community will have an opportunity to give input and better understand, have an opportunity to better understand where we stand right now with the earmark as well as with the preservation work that's being proposed for the meeting house. I just want folks to know that I feel very strongly that there be transparency and that there be important community input into the process. And 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 give the the community an opportunity to understand what, just what is at stake. So thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Walt. I hope you're gonna be there. Go from there. All right, let's move on to the twenty twenty-three tax rate.
Let me just make one brief comment.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry, I won't take long time. Reading from the old meeting house and first church in Rockingham, Vermont, Hayes. We just have to preserve this. We just have to. Meeting house, just three sentences. Planned by the original proprietors of the town at their first meeting in seventeen fifty-three. One of the finest examples in New England of colonial church architecture, keepers of the key. The present meeting house started in seventeen eighty-seven, used for church services and town meetings. Like the foundation of our town is so many people come all the time to ask, how do you get to the Rockingham Meeting House? When I'm volunteering down at the riverfront park, he either asked me, how do you get to the meeting house from here? Or how do you find the penderless? So I just wanna thank you so much for letting me say that, but it's such, it's a foundation of our town. It's really important.
Okay.
It's our town seal, so we don't have it there anymore.
All right, Scott, you wanna take the lead on this wonderful news that people are gonna? Whatever, you might want me to charge, it's not me.
It's a good news budget, I think, and we can, you know, I think probably, like any budget, there's always choices to be made. But I think when we hit the highlights, there's some things in this budget that I think sort of represent what this board wanted to do. And that was to continue to invest in the community. So we have, we bought more replacement equipment for the highway so that they can, you know, more effectively do their job. And people have seen the results of what they've been doing and are pleased with, you know, some of the improvements that they've seen. We've, we've increased, again, our paving budget without going into debt and issuing additional debt. So people are, always love to see roads being paved. So that was also, I think, something that was high on the board's list of concerns. We've added a hundred thousand dollars to reserves for projects that we know we have to take on, which are bridges and also refurbishment of a fire truck for the Rockingham Fire Department. And I got some additional information from the fire chief today about the cost of replacement versus repair. And we're probably gonna have to have a follow-up meeting with the fire equipment committee and decide how we wanna go forward with that process. So we hope to see significant savings in the repair process. And it doesn't appear that we're gonna save that much more money than going after a new or replacement vehicle. So that'll be a separate conversation, I think, down the road. But no matter what you do, the monies that we've allocated for that will still be available to help offset that cost. And probably the biggest drivers of any additional costs in this budget is, quite frankly, you know, we had to increase, uh, some of our, our cost to benefit plans that we talked about with health insurance and also with wages. And then at the end of the day, when you look at all, all of our ratios and the things that the others report to us about where do we stand with aside fund balances and how are we doing overall, even though we've proposed that you use fund balance from both the general fund and highway, you're still significantly above the twenty percent thresholds in both of those categories. As you remember, last year, we added almost two hundred thousand dollars to fund balance. So, in terms of people being concerned about being fiscally conservative, I think this board has always minded its, its, uh, you know, its responsibilities and made sure that it, it kept things, I think, reasonable in relationship to approaching people and asking them for additional money for taxes. So, with all that sort of as a background, and, and thank you to Alyssa for numbering the budget pages.
Yep. Even by hand.
It's above the beyond, you know. But anyway, so, so we do have the budget, which pretty much represents all of our previous conversations. And then that sort of then drives us towards our, our tax rate calculations, which you can see, um, which we updated for this evening. And as Peter had mentioned, it's about a roughly four cents additional on the tax rate. And, um, and that would include that all of the potential articles are also approved. So, we had listed those out separately, as you can see on the tax rate calculation. Alyssa put those in red. So, those obviously are discretionary at the advice of, of town meeting. And, and at this point, the assumption that we made is that they would be approved, and that would then drive that number to what you see for our request for the overall budget. So, that's sort of the ten thousand foot view. We did add an additional article since we last spoke, and I think Bonnie and I had spoken, and she had also brought it up to the board about support for maintenance in the riverfront park. And as opposed to putting it in as a social services article, it was, uh, probably more expedient to put it on directly as an article, as well as Bonnie had mentioned, she might approach the village to do something along the same lines to help maintain and, and operate the, that part, which everybody also enjoys as well. So, that gets us to our bottom line, and that's where we are for this evening, which also is part of our warning, which we'll talk about separately.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the budget? Please keep in mind, Charlie, please keep in mind that, uh, anything you do with personnel that should be discussed in executive section so that we don't tip our hand of strategies of union negotiations, which is gonna be coming up on the twelfth of January, we're gonna start. That being said, anyone have any questions?
I have one, just one question. Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, so Scott, you said that four cents increase you're looking at, at overall?
Yes.
Okay. So, what is that amount to, or how's this assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand?
About seventy bucks, something around there. Sixty bucks?
Three and sixty and so.
Two hundred thousand dollars, eighty dollars a year.
So, okay, so, yeah, so, so, because maybe here, four cents, that may sound like a lot, but in over a year's time, it was eighty dollars for a two hundred thousand dollar house. That sounds pretty reasonable.
Yeah. And, and the other thing people have to remember too is that the school, hopefully the school's not gonna go crazy and go over, but there's a three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the next two, three years, I think, that they're using to reduce their budget. So, there's some balance, if you notice, on your tax bill. This year, it went down a pretty good chunk of money.
Yeah.
So, that's, there's a plus there that people don't take that into consideration. So.
I just think if we could put things as simple as possible to the people, the taxpayers, I think the best way to do it, you know, dollars and cents. In other words, four cents on a two hundred thousand dollar house is eighty bucks.
Right.
So, it's, it's, it's based.
Yeah. That's our intent, make it simple. We weren't pretty easy last year. So, we plan on doing the same thing this year. Anyone have any questions on the budget?
I just got one, one general question. Uh, under service agencies, it says, uh, YMCA. Do we still have a YMCA?
Yeah, the, the Louis Day Camp up in Springville. We send kids there and that money funds.
Okay.
Some of the costs that the people at camp, of course, and the kids there. Gary?
Yeah, so they also, they have an office in the, um, uh, the healthcare building, Gray Rockingham Area Services. And they provide, um, after-school programs, uh, for the elementary school kids, um.
The Y does have an office there?
Yes.
I didn't know.
So, they're still, they are still active in the village for, um, kids. You wouldn't, you wouldn't see it unless you were.
The OY, the one that goes to six, six actions.
Right, yeah, I know. Like that, they haven't been there.
They used to do it there when I was on the board. Anyone else?
I guess, Peter, another thing that I'll mention is I did include in the board's information as well, just these proposed uses of ARPA since we are approaching the conversation we had about we have to spend funds by the end of twenty twenty-four. So, we got four specific items listed in this round that we thought made sense. One is what we'd already spoken about, the hundred fifty thousand for the meeting house. The hundred thousand for the train station phase one repairs, which Gary had mentioned in a previous memo, and we had gone into great detail on that. The seventy-five thousand for the first phase of the town hall roof that we were discussing this evening, that we had the RFPs out, which will be part of the strengthening and the rehabilitation, um, which is a long-term project of getting this roof and this building, uh, up to speed. And then the other, the other piece was the hundred fifteen thousand, which we had identified as a replacement chassis. And if it turns out that we're not gonna spend a lot of specific amount of chassis, we recommend that we'll have to spend it on some sort of replacement vehicle, depending upon how the fire equipment committee reviews that going forward.
Okay.
During the ARPA discussions, the wood-fired boiler for the hospital was discussed. Where, where did that end up?
Well, Marty had secured some additional funds, and we're also gonna talk to the village about potentially supporting that as well, since they have, you know, substantially more ARPA funds in the town.
Yeah, about twice the money. They got twice as much as we did, about eight hundred thousand dollars.
But Gary and I have been working with Marty on, on securing other sources of funds, so.
Okay. Okay, we do need to adopt the budget, I imagine. And the next item will be, uh, the proposed warning, but, um, if someone wants to make the motion, then Alyssa can help somebody if they don't have the wording correct, or the numbers right.
I'll make a motion to set the town of Rockingham municipal tax rate as one point one six four five four and accept the educational tax rates as one they are provided by the state of the month for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
That, that, that takes care of the tax rate, you need to adopt the budget, which would be the, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be all articles passed, it would be six million nine hundred and twenty thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars, with taxes to be raised, so five million four eighty-eight eighty-nine, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which results in that point, uh, one point one six five four tax rate. Right?
Okay. Everybody have that open?
Yes.
Exactly what Elijah just said.
You want to be certain, but you can't just adopt the tax rate, you gotta do the budget first. Okay, everybody understanding where we're going with this?
Yes.
Any further questions? Just so it's clarified, the articles to be added would be the library article, social services, and the articles for the library.
Clarification, Peter, that social services has to be accepted all or nothing by the voters?
Yeah. Yeah. They can change the amount if, if, if they, if they vote on the total this year, not each individual item. Next year, we sit there and go through every one of them. Which is why I have suggestions about looking at a committee to maybe narrow those down. Maybe we just set a, a, a money budget, and first come, first served, and when it's gone, it's gone. And Scott sent out from town, uh, Wednesfield, and that's how they do it. They have a committee. And they have, you have the answer, pretty stupid questions to find out if they're gonna give you any money.
So, the organization come make their pitch to the.
They make your pitch, yeah. It's a separate meeting that they don't come here. They can have a separate committee meeting, and they line them up and come in and make your pitch. And then that committee can answer. We did this, it's from Charlie, can't remember this one, seven or eight years ago, we did it. And then it kind of just died by the wayside, I think. Because it is getting up there fairly hot, and it's almost two cents on the tax.
You should look at that.
We're, we're gone. Okay, so everyone has a budget? Uh, the figure in mind, uh, although in favor would say.
There was a second. Was there a second?
I have a second, but it wasn't.
Second. All right, now we're are we ready to adopt the budget of six million nine hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, with the amount of tax to be raised at five million four eighty-eight four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, resulting in a tax rate of one point one six five four, which is a four percent increase. Although in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, nay. Most would care. We have a budget. Next item is the proposed twenty twenty-three warning and articles. Scott, do you wanna say anything more than the African?
No, I think that's all I needed to do here. He was highlighting, so it's part of this budget. And again, the board can change those, those are not set in stone. It's not like the, uh.
Okay, now, we do have a warning handed out tonight, but we have a couple of questions we gotta make on it.
This is slightly different than the one that was in your packet, and I'll just highlight the things that we did change. I did confirm with the clerk's office on the first page that the balloting for March the seventh begins at eight AM. The previous version said nine AM. The amount in Article Five to be raised by taxes, we did the math and redid the math, and Peter and I sat down with Alyssa again this morning, and we did the math. So, the correct amount is the four million eight eighty-three two sixty-one, which is Article Five, for that specific item. The social services this year actually do add up. We add them up, and they, they add up to the nine two thousand nine seventy-eight. You recall from last year's town meeting, they did not add up, and one of the numbers was transposed, and I think we had to stop, you know, stop the world from spinning.
Different from the warning and the ballot.
It was quite a, quite a moment, so
Yeah.
we survived, and I've learned a lesson. And now this one, I added two columns and they work. So, I've learned a lesson. The Article Seven, which is the library, is basically, uh, unchanged from what they had originally asked. So, that number is not changed. And I believe that Alyssa and Ian had gone through that on a couple of different occasions. So, I think we're in good shape there. Article Eight, which reflects the additional monies that we just talked about with Walter, the hundred and three thousand. That's that, um, part of that, uh, match for the Save America's Treasures, as well as Article Nine, which reflects the annual, uh, appeal that we asked for the twenty-two thousand for ongoing maintenance. So, when you add the two together, we're asking for roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the taxpayers to support ongoing maintenance and preservation efforts at the meeting house. We did add, as Article Ten, the, uh, request for the maintenance at the riverfront park. Article Eleven reflects the conversation you had tonight with the sheriff, and, and that number is the number that we initially spoke of. We did have some comments about whether or not we felt that was appropriate. It's really, um, I think at this point, I was trying to establish a baseline and see if there is in fact some, and some, some satisfaction if we did get a contract, to see how that worked out, and to see if it was something we would approach with the sheriff longer term. So, that's why that number was purposefully done as sort of an entry level. It was not reflected in any way, shape, or form of what probably ultimately it could go to if the board really desired. Article Twelve is, again, a request to town meeting folks to see if we want to have future votes, uh, by Australian ballot. So, that's Article Twelve. And Thirteen is just the general, transact any other businesses, any other business. So, we had to flip-flop the articles. I think originally we had, Australian ballots, the last article, and we just flipped. So, twelve and thirteen changed places. And that's basically the update from the last, uh, bought, the version that you had in your, in your packets.
All right, one point of clarification. Article Five is two different numbers on this thing than what we just approved. And when you approve the budget and the taxes to be raised, including all articles, we're just assuming at that point that the library, the social service, and the, the Rockingham Meeting House article will pass. But the Article Five states a different number that they left off, those additional numbers that need to be voted on for a qualified article. So, do we need to, I, we probably need to just redo that motion to read, to match Article Five.
The amount to be raised by taxes?
Well, both the total amount of six three one four nine five nine and four million eight eight three two six one.
I mean, you, you, you.
We, we voted with everything assumption that all those three articles are gonna pass, but that's not what we're asking for on Item Five.
You guys, well, because you break them out in separate requests, otherwise it would.
Right, right. So, generally what they do is they, they take in, we, at the town meeting, those two numbers on Article Five are what we should be adopting tonight as a budget and the amount to be raised. And then as these articles come up, and if they either voted up or voted down, that changes, that changes as it goes along. But with this, with this tax sheet that we have here, we'll be able to follow that freely, at the end of the meeting.
So, you're saying that you wanna do a vote for the first number that's in green and blue?
Like you've highlighted there, we should, we need to
Yeah.
adopt the budget of four million, uh, of six million three fourteen nine fifty-nine, and taxes to be raised to four million eight eight three two six ones. And then let the other articles fall where they may. If they don't pass, well, I can't believe the library's not gonna pass, and the social services will always pass, no matter what happens. And then the library, the Rockingham Meeting House is the only one that would be up in the air. I assume that's gonna pass, but.
There is no article for the cemetery. Isn't there?
Doesn't matter, we rescind the previous vote and correct the, correct the amount. Let's see the board.
It's not.
I think taxpayers, we will understand it more clearly because, because, because they haven't yet, certainly they haven't yet approved the addition thing.
That's why I say we, we should go back and rescind the previous motion to adopt the budget of this, and then go with the new numbers on Article Five. And then if the others pass, we'll all have our chiefs in front of us. If one of these, if all these pass, then we all have, we'll have the totals, the new totals right here, rather than having somebody trying to figure it out with an ad machine, where Alyssa's gonna bring her little calculator with her.
Do you, do you remember in the past, was there an article for the cemetery budget?
No.
For the taxes for the cemetery?
Yeah, the dollars in there.
Well, then this number has to change.
It's assumed in the general fund, that's my understanding of it.
Yeah, it's, it's in that one million eight hundred fourteen thousand.
It's not.
Huh? I think it is.
No, not so. It's always been listed out separately like that?
With cemetery?
That's why it, this always gets so confusing. It does, and I was trying to simplify it, but I don't think I did.
The only thing that.
You did, you made it more, it made it
Well, specifically targeted to what it's for.
But, but yeah, the cemetery one sometimes.
Cemetery is a number of, and there's a thing that gets so confusing, one is the one
But it is, it is in that one.
With the library, voting on the library, voting on a whole team as well, and you're also including the budget, but this year we did not include
Don't stroke.
Those numbers in the budget, but the library, everything is in the.
Our town has some money.
Add in cemetery, including in the.
Yeah, yeah, because if you add up all the ones that are in black over here that say in the budget, those equal the five eight three two six one. Okay, I was having a mini stroke this time. Okay. It, it gets really confusing. I mean, it has happened when, before we, we've added the library into it.
Yeah.
And we ended up, our tax rate was way off.
Yeah.
We, we caught it before town meeting, but it, it gets real.
Everybody, when I was asked a question, it's in the budget, why are we voting on it separately?
Well, I took it out this time because of that.
Which is, I think, the way it's all done, that it should be done that way, because you're voting on an article that it should not be in your budget.
Otherwise, in all honesty, you're really authorizing.
You actualize, you're paying it twice.
Really want it to be by the way that's what you're doing.
Get your fund balance up. It's a sneaky way to do it.
So, so what are you gonna change here then?
I, I think we need to go back to this Article Five, which is, uh, if you go and look at your tax sheet, you will see that general fund, cemetery, and highway says six three one four nine five nine. It's highlighted. Taxes to be raised is the next one on the, to the right, four million eight eight three two six one.
That's the base budget without all the articles.
Right.
Yes.
So, then, I can guarantee you that.
You just need to vote. Yeah, right.
So, but to match the article we're asking for, we need to. So, but to match the article we're asking for, we need to adopt the budget from that way. And then it's explained
So the article amounts are correct, you just want to match it to what we just did for the budget.
Exactly, yeah. You should be adopting the correct budget number. And then as the articles come up and get either passed or not passed, then you can say, okay, that adds to the tax.
That adjusts the number some, depending upon, right.
Right.
So then this
So if you, if we're
Here's all the articles you're adding.
Elijah, I'm sorry. No, I was just asking, so Elijah, he asked you, you're sending a motion, or how does that work?
Yeah.
Well, he could ask to amend it.
I can rescind, he made one motion, I just expanded on it.
Okay.
With the correct number, we can take that off. But then also, it's not required on the tax rate of 1,1654. I think we just leave that off. It down, now, that's tax rate, just adopt the budget. And when we all get done at the end of the meeting, somebody's gonna get up and say, well, what's that mean in taxes? Well, then we can tell them at that point.
And even then, we don't know what's gonna be in taxes, because you have the
Right.
We don't know what the school is, we don't know what the grant list really will be at that point, right? So, there's a lot of variables on that tax.
You have the 411 that shows the grant lists as of December.
I mean, we can all, if all items pass that are requesting funds, then the tax rate will be, which would be a force of increase. That's the way I would do it.
Yeah.
So, all right. Let's, I would move to rescind the previous vote on the, adopting the budget of $6,921.87 with tax to be raised to $5,488.89. We'll give a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody know what we're doing? Okay, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Most who care, we have rescinded the previous vote. Now we are going to vote on adopting the correct budget, which is a budget of $6,314,959 with raising taxes of $4,883.261. Does anybody have that? Fine. Okay. Does he get a second?
I second.
Okay. Well, you remain second to adopt the budget of $6,314,959 with $4,883,000, eight eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, I can't even block mine. $261 to be raised by taxes. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Good, we matched, okay.
That's what it says here in Article 5.
Right.
Yeah, but that's not what we voted on.
Yeah, we adopted a different number.
Oh, okay, so you voted, you adopted the full one the first time.
Right, so we adopted, the first time, we did it with all our articles, and we don't know if they're gonna pass. We can assume they do, but
But now do we have to do the tax rate again, because that was all mishmashed in the
No, we don't have to tactic. We can, we can, it's been gone, the articles passed, and that, I would, one of us, either Scott or I can rule those against the
Because we really vote on the tax rate in July, if we have all of this information.
Right, adopt the tax rate.
Right, I think you're doing that for illustrative purposes.
So you can just say this since our, test to be taxed rate with all articles, it would be 1.164, whatever that could happen to be.
So then
Okay.
Nobody saw any other typos in that?
Then we got adopted one, we decided to sign it.
Oh, yeah.
No warning, yeah, it's about to adopt a warning.
Somewhere around June or something like that, before the tax bills come out.
Yeah, don't forget to adopt that.
Right.
Got to sign that too.
Yeah.
You will send it, I think.
I'm seeing it. Yeah, we all
Elijah.
So now we will go to adoption, adoption of the, or the town meeting warning. Does anyone have any questions or anything on the town meeting warning, or we all settle that? Here's the being. Can somebody, is the signature page gone around?
There it is.
All I'm just doing now, okay, so we don't lose it, Scott.
All right, so I move that we adopt the 2023 warning and articles.
Here, a second.
I second.
Well, you remain seconded to adopt the town meeting warning articles for the town meeting on March 6th and 7th of 2023. This will be for fiscal year 2024. No questions? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? We're good to go there. Okay, let's get down to the digital radio grant sole source. There's a note in your packet on that.
Right, so we've had this on previous agendas, and what this is, is based on our procurement policy and how we would handle the actual acquisition of the radios. We have to specify that we are currently a Motorola digital customer, and then we continue to be a Motorola digital customer. And therefore, we would only have in Vermont, because the way they service their territories, we'd have three potential bidders that we would send the RFPs to for repeaters and all the digital radios. But that would keep us in compliance with our current financial policy. So I'm just requesting that the board authorize the Motorola digital radios repeaters as a sole source of the Motorola product.
Question, so there are three possible vendors, but only one of them can sell Motorola equipment?
No, there's three in the state of Vermont. They typically break themselves up into territories. So we'll submit the RFP to all three, and I don't know if they'll all three vote, but, or they'll all three bid, but they'll at least have the same specific radios and repeaters. Which is what we want.
Okay, so we need the motion, it's written in there for financial policy, just after, we just need to designate Motorola. So if anyone wants to make that motion.
I move that we designate Motorola radios and repeaters as sole source item for procurement.
We'll give a second.
I second.
I'm being seconded to adopt Motorola radios as, and repeaters as sole source item for procurement. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Moving on to the updated fire reimbursement ordinance, which we discussed at the last meeting, and now we have it print.
So we did, right, discuss this on the last meeting, and there was some confusion about what was actually adopted previously. And going back through old copies of the minutes, we could not find where the 2019 changes have been adopted. So we went through and made sure that we had with the fire department the correct current rates. And that reflects this document that you have in front of you, so I'm asking the board to just sign this as a, this is a an attachment to our existing ordinance, and therefore, when we do billings, we'll at least have this document then up to date and authorized, in case there's any challenges as to what people are getting actually billed.
The brush fire, the expensive brush fire recently, how, how was that billed?
It was billed using these rates.
Okay, and then, and by the way, has anyone paid it yet?
No, they're disputing the bill. That's in discussion for another day.
All right, yeah, just curious.
Probably not a short one.
Whenever it comes to fires, it's kind of always a story.
So we need a motion to adopt the updated fire reimbursement ordinance. Someone make that motion.
I move that we adopt the revised fire service reimbursement rates.
I'll second that.
Well, you remained to adopt the updated fire reimbursement ordinance. Any further questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
If you have a signature page, you are muted.
This one, and we can just send this one around, thank you.
And you said, let's go to the review of agenda items for January 17th. We'll have financials then?
Yes, we'll do financials. We're probably gonna have the group trust bid, the first reinforcement package that we discussed previously. DOT wants to come, there's a scoping project, not for any of our current bridge projects, but another project that we'll have to talk to the board about. And also the, the last chance to look at the fire feasibility scoping before we do the joint board meeting at the end of January, and then potentially submit the fire feasibility study to USDA in February. So, those are sure we
Hey, anyone else? We can have to get those done. If we have one he has and the other, just send him and Scott, review agenda items for the joint board meeting.
So we are, the attorney has been in, he's been working on the next phase of our tax collection, which is nice. That's taken a while, but I think we'll have an update on that. And we have to finalize our, like I said, the fire feasibility study at that meeting as well. At the joint board meeting. No one other item that's escaping me at the moment, that'll probably come back to me after we're done.
January 31st, if somebody
Yes, with the closing of Masuko and Stern, are there any documents we need to retrieve?
Talk to his secretary, she's working on some of our files, some things that we have requested, and she'll let me know when they're available, so I can come and get them.
Good.
Yes.
Thanks.
Cross it off my list, I'm sorry if I'm gonna ask
Including previous, including previous tax sale and some of the other stuff that we wanted to get on.
And the new attorney is, we're using Kuta or someone else?
We're using, right now, we're using Stephen Kuta.
That's working well.
Steve's right.
Okay, we can bond up the business, so we can get out of here tonight. Elijah? Bonnie? Sue?
I would just like to suggest that maybe we write a letter to Senator Leahy for his retirement. He's been our senator for 48 years, he's done a lot for Rockingham and the state. So I don't know, we do that as a town, as a manager, I don't even need a motion to do that, I think we just should do it.
Agreed.
Whether it says board or as a joint board.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of late.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, we can announce ours to vendors in the middle of our
Yeah, just
We can sign it the next board meeting, 17th, go on.
He will certainly be missed on the federal
For my own work, he's given more than $400 million to address my work I work on.
Yeah, that seniority makes a difference.
More than that.
Okay, ready?
Nothing.
Following up a little bit on that, we're gonna, we're, they're gonna have the information for our union negotiations, hopefully. That information they're turning.
Which case?
Masuko?
Yes, before the 12.
Right.
Yes.
And we, are we meeting with, including the plan, our strategy out there, where we're going with this, so we're all on the same page?
Once we get the files.
Before the 12?
Yes.
And you want to, want a little detail of that Rockingham fire meal that we got about the cops and the truck instead of
It was a little bit surprising, and I haven't gone through all the detail, but we had originally anticipated that the cost of refurbishment would be about $200,000 to $250,000. And just looking at the rough number that Kevin sent us, it was almost $400,000 for the refurbishment. So by the time you add the $115 for the chassis, the $400 for refurbishment, we were pretty close to the cost of the new one, which was in the $500 to $600 range. At least that, that's what was the estimate. Now, the problem is, maybe that estimate's gone up, and maybe now that's $600,000 to $700,000, so again, I just don't know the numbers.
Department of Agriculture funds our fire study. We don't have to make any decisions before that report comes back, do we, in terms of equipment? Because I think we're kind of over equipped for a town of 5,000 people, we have a lot of extensive gear.
That's a, a lot of people have a lot of opinions about.
I've heard many of them.
Well, as you say, the same thing, but that's probably gonna be a discussion at one of our fire committee meetings.
Yes.
We're, I think we need to get that study, as you said, on top of the ground, get moving with it.
Absolutely. Well, you can see the scope of the, the decisions that you have to make, that's a lot of money.
Lot of money.
And that's just one piece of, that's not, you know, we have 11.
And, you know, the Secretary of Fire Department question with Athens has been settled, so that's
They negotiated their deal.
No, they, Athens said they're going to draft it.
I heard that was a good story.
So they don't have to go up there anymore, so. Or the rescue or fire truck, so.
But they're down that four or five thousand bucks, that they, the red gap is big.
Yeah. That's what they were trying to, I guess they were jumping into 75 this year. But then I heard now that they were talking $15,000. I think they settled draft for 94, if I remember that. But one department told me not to recycle, and then
Yeah.
Trump and Sachin Ture, not Larry White, so.
Yeah. And
And this fire study, I, I came up for it, but they're also looking at the mutual aid, factoring that in. Because, I mean, when I thought of that, the fire in Springfield, at the same time, there's a fire in Chester. And it's like, that's when you realize you do need this kind of equipment in the area. But how to distribute it, and how do you rely on mutual aid, and can you, I'm assuming that'll all be factored into the study.
That's a big piece of it.
Also, ambulances are gonna come to that, somewhere along, right?
It's gonna be part of that discussion too.
So, hey, anyone, there's no need for the executive session that I can think of. Patrick?
Can I just ask orders, bills, and warrants, you didn't go through that?
Been doing your orders and bills, so I don't see that.
There's none, okay. Usually you say that there's none, so I just want to make sure.
No?
There's someone on the chat, someone chat.
I know, I kept, but it's, I kept, when I looked at it, there was that's, that was the answer for the, Peter's question about trying to get the, the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. He'd asked a question before you guys came about trying to get the meeting live on the government access, he's had a problem with it. So that was, that was their response to that, they're working on some things.
We've been on the chat on, they put, well, the, the detail and TV service out there sucks.
I've heard a lot of people lost their channels, the cable portion of it. People were upset.
I heard. Of course, they're, some of their programming is down to Comcast, I don't know if you knew that or not.
I didn't know that, I don't, it's surprising.
They, there ain't, on the, we were talking about switching, but they're on demand services, you know, you watch it.
Yeah.
They take Comcast, goes and that's it.
Oh, so they
So, yeah. It's wonderful on me going on. All right, no need for executive session, take motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion main seconded, and all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.